I'll check in a minute.
The volume seems to be really loud.
Quiet.
I think our clock is a little slow, so I think it's time for us to begin. So if you please stand and join me for the flag salute. Remain standing for a moment of silence. Freddie salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We're going to begin today with public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Board on Matters, which is within our jurisdiction but not on our today's agenda, are invited to come forward at this time. Please give us your name and address. Public comment period is now open. Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public comment period and bring it to the Board Supervisor Matters. Begin to my right with Mr. Ennis today.
Yes, last Friday evening, had an opportunity to attend the victim rights ceremonies out at Holiday Inn where they unveiled the quilts and all the quilts from people that have been involved in incidents throughout Tulare County. It was pretty moving, very moving and touching ceremony and was glad I was there to be a part of that. That's all I have this morning.
Thank you. Mr. Shida?
Sunday, I participated in a water panel in Irvine and we discussed the issues about California water. And I already received a call back from someone who was in the audience on a follow-up on our water issues. While we were there, one of the panel members was talking to one of the waiters and he overheard that we were talking about water. And he mentioned that his water has basically doubled in the last two years in Irvine, the cost of water per month. And partially, part of the problem is, is that you have fixed costs and they're not getting the same allocation of water from the California state system, so they have to charge more for the water that they're receiving even though they're receiving less. And there also are instances where there are a lot of Southern California farmers and even the Central Valley farmers who are being charged the full rate of, for water that they do not receive. They have to pay it anyway. Even if they don't get a drop, they're contracted for a certain amount of water and they have to pay that overhead. And that's because of fixed overhead. So we're finally getting the attention of Southern California that what's happening in the Central Valley and the Delta is also directly impacting their lives. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Tomorrow morning, I have a conflict I'd like to ask for the Board's help for. I have an Economic Development Corporation meeting in Woodlake at between 7:30 and 8:30 or 9:00. And then I also have a Retirement Board meeting at 8:30. So I'd like to get a member of this Board to fill in at the EDC if I could. And it's the EDC as well as Biz.
Supervisor Cox, I am the representative for Biz, so I will look in at the meeting in your place.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, appreciate that. Anything else?
Other than that, I have nothing else.
Mr. Vandepoel?
Just to follow up on last week's gang forum, we had a very successful event at Mission Oak High School. It was well attended and I think that all the attendees and participants learned a lot. And we exposed them to some really great resources and also gave them an opportunity to interact with the county's top law enforcement officials. So it was a great event for the 300 or so people that did attend. And then the last thing is I just want to send, I just want to send my congratulations to the Farmer of the Year for Tulare, Joe and Joey Arrosa. They will, they will be honored tomorrow at the Farmer of the Year Luncheon in the city of Tulare. So just wanted to send my congratulations out to them.
Thank you. Last night, we had an accident involving one of our county staff persons, Eric Coyne, and former staff person, Brian Thoburn, returning from a function in the Porterville area. Maybe you'd like to fill us in on what happened, Mr. Shida?
Last night, yesterday evening, Mr. Coyne and Mr. Thoburn attended the, the debate between, and District 5 debate between Supervisor Ennis. And on their way home after dinner, they were hit by a car. They were northbound on Highway 65 and they got hit by a driver that was driving on the wrong side of the highway. And what saved him is the driver hit a bridge at the canal crossing, so it slowed his, slowed his speed and the car ended up on the hood of Mr. Thoburn's car. But Eric was released at approximately 5:30 this morning with very minor injuries and Brian is still there for observation and I expect him to be released this afternoon. So they were very fortunate.
Thank you for that, that update. Tomorrow, I will be in Sacramento, meeting with legislative leadership on the subvention for the Williamson Act contracts and hopefully we'll be able to make some progress with the reinstatement of the subvention dollars, which for Tulare County could mean as much as $3.4 million. So you might be thinking good thoughts about me while I'm up there tomorrow. It's going to be difficult sell with the kind of hold the state has, but we do have a very compelling story as to why for very small money, the state gets a tremendous amount of benefit from the California Conservation Act. And we're trying to use that term as opposed to Williamson Act because it really is a state program for which they have a very small investment and get, and receive a lot of rewards. With that, we'll move on then to our first, I'm going to talk to our consent calendar, Item 6 through 31. Are there any items that need to be pulled or handled separately?
Motion to approve consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Please cast your votes. Animously support the consent calendar. And that will take us to our first untimed item, item number 32. A request from the Sheriff's Office of the Department to approve an agreement with Project Lifesaver International. Morning, Captain Hinesley.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I'll stand away from the mic. I know that I don't probably need it most of the time. This morning, what we're coming in front of you is to have you approve an agreement with Project Lifesaver International. It's a group that will provide equipment and training to assist us in locating individuals that have dementia, related disorders, that wander away from their homes. The startup cost for a project like this is around $6,000. However, through grants and partnering with people in the community, it's basically going to cost us, the county, almost nothing. What it is going to cost us is some time. Couple of months ago, about two and a half, three months ago, we had an incident in Exeter where a person had walked away, wandered away, and we had about 35 to 40 people out there within an hour or so. If we would have had this equipment and that person had have been, had this equipment on, most of the fines are within 15 minutes. So you can imagine, instead of having 35 people, you bring out a couple of people with some tracking devices and 15 minutes, the people are located. I'd like to bring up Lieutenant Larry McCary, who's going to be the project director for the Sheriff's Department. And he's going to, he's got some of the nuts and bolts of what the program actually is, so you get an idea of what the transceivers and the transmitters are. Larry, you want to come on up? And give you an idea just what exactly we're talking about.
Thank you. Good morning. Morning. I had time to tabulate the hours that we spent on that search that Captain Hinesley was speaking of, and I hadn't had a chance to brief him. We spent 174 hours of regular shift, 32 hours of overtime. That's not including two airships that were called out. Just under $10,000 it cost to, for that one mission. And it lasted, it was 14 hours in length overall. Also, the young lady did have a history of wandering, so she would have been the perfect candidate to be fitted with this type of equipment. The equipment is basically a transmitter, it's on a radio frequency, it is fitted with a wristband. The care providers provided this tester where every day they are to test it. And I don't know if you can see the red light flashing? That indicates that it's active. The battery, it's a 3-volt lithium cell battery, has approximately a 45-day life. However, we change the battery every 30 days to ensure that it is operating. This is a receiver. It actually comes with a omnidirectional and a directional antenna. The, this is the directional antenna that will be used to pinpoint a subject's location. And the omnidirectional can be used, or is designed to be used on the top of a patrol car or the bottom of an aircraft. I was told of an incident in the San Luis Obispo area where a gentleman was fitted with one of these. He liked to ride his bicycle. He was gone, they couldn't find him. Put an airship in the air with the antenna, they found him 28 miles away in Santa Maria. Once they got a signal, identified his location, they sent in the ground team with a directional antenna and were able to triangulate his location and locate him. The, turn it on to see if you can hear it. We have to turn the gain up on this so we can make sure we get it a good, I don't know if you can hear the chirping. Of course, we're in a building, so it's kind of bouncing around. But what will happen is, as we're looking for somebody and we're moving and we're turning, you may get a very faint signal and then as it comes up stronger, we'll notice, start searching that direction. We'll then move forward and we'll have a second box out, triangulate it and locate them. I've been in discussion with some police departments that have this in effect and use this regularly. They've spent hours and hours searching for individuals that they've identified in their community. They've outfitted this and they've reduced their search time down to approximately 15 to 20 minutes, as soon as 11 minutes. So it's really gets help to these people quickly, ensures their safety, and it reduces the, the time spent. And I would like to introduce Denise Tarman. Her foundation is also assisting us with this program.
Thank you. Good morning, Denise.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. This is a really exciting day for me and my family. We've been working on this for the past two and a half years with Project Lifesaver and with the partnership between the Tulare County Sheriff's Office and my foundation, Wandering Back Home. Wandering Back Home is a personal quest in honor of my son, Stephen. Stephen was diagnosed at an early age of two with Prater-Willie Syndrome, a disorder which would cause Stephen to become a danger to himself and to others as a result of his inability to control his urges and impulses. Because of these uncontrollable urges and impulses, Stephen spent most of his life in group homes and locked facilities. His last placement was in Riverside, California, a community-based group home specifically for Prater-Willie Syndrome individuals. The administrators assured us their staff was specially trained in dealing with individuals with PWS and even supplied him with a full-time, one-on-one supervision during his wandering tendencies, due to his wandering tendencies. On December 27th, 2007, two days after Christmas, I received a phone call from Stephen's group home telling me he was missing. It seems his caretaker left him unattended in a car for a few minutes while she ran into the post office. When she returned, he was gone. Stephen had gone missing in the past and I wasn't terribly concerned when I received the call and was sure he would be found as soon as it got dark because that was his habit. As day turned to night, my concern became fear. An all-out search was launched within several hours of his disappearance. Volunteers distributed flyers and searched the surrounding areas. The Riverside Police kept special watch throughout their shifts. Spots ran on local television and radio stations. A number of articles were written in the local newspapers. Stephen's name and picture were placed in all the appropriate missing person databases. At one point, the search efforts even expanded to the neighboring city of San Bernardino due to a reported sighting. Hours turned to days, then to weeks and months, and still no Stephen. Ultimately, on March 29th, 2008, I received a phone call no parent wants to ever receive. My son's remains had been found less than two miles from where he had wandered off. During the time he was missing, I learned that Project Lifesaver was operating in the city of Riverside. Had we known about the program sooner, we might have been able to equip Stephen with the bracelet and he might still be alive today. My family and I established Wandering Back Home, a lifesaver project, with the intent that if we could save one life, Stephen's death will not have been in vain. This partnership with Tulare County Sheriff's Office will enable families with loved ones who have the tendency to wander to have peace of mind in the event a wandering off happens and give them the best chance at a happy outcome. Wandering Back Home is committed to educating the community about the availability of this protection. We also commit to assist financially, ensure those who need a bracelet don't go without if they can't afford it. I want to thank Under Sheriff Dahl Clique, Captain Jim Hinesley, and Lieutenant Larry McCary for their efforts and follow-through in bringing this vital service to Tulare County. It is my hope you will support this project with a unanimous, with a unanimous yes vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
I'd be happy to answer any questions if there is any.
Are there any questions?
I just wanted to ask, I don't know if Denise or Captain, if you know, how many residents do you think in Tulare County will benefit or could use this resource? Do you have any estimates or no?
No, I don't. That home that we went to in Exeter had seven people in it and right after this incident, we told them, they were, we got seven signed up. So I think that once the publicity gets out there, once people know that it's available county-wide, we're hoping that the high-risk individuals will sign up for the program at basically no cost. And at a $200 annually that's going to cost us, you know, that's, we're talking about batteries, that's it. So I can't answer your question exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Devils in the details here. Very familiar with the program. Couple detailed questions I hope you thought out. Batteries need to be changed every month. Who's going to do that?
Well, that's, that's a good question.
Being that it has to be done by a certified installer.
Right. And believe me, the training to change batteries is really not that complicated.
You still have to have the, you still have to have the 16 hours, is it 24? You have to have a minimum of 16 hours training to be certified.
We have a great program in the Sheriff's Office called our volunteer program, Volunteers in Patrol. We're going to train those individuals. They're always looking for something new to do and we're going to give them this task and we're going to follow up, we're going to keep a log, and we're going to document when they go out to which homes, and that's how it's going to be completed.
Right. And, and the train, because here I noticed in the training it was $1,200. How many officers are you going to train to oversee the masses of volunteers? Because I've been on these call-outs as well to look for missing and endangereds. And you're right, without this device, you know, we've been out for hours and hours and hours and not found the people before, but with the device, minutes.
One of the things that we're going to do is we're going to do, train the trainer. So we're going to train the individuals within our agency to become trainers to do exactly what you're talking about. Then we only have the one-time cost and then we have our employees doing it on regular time, instructing everyone else. So that's how we're going to do that.
Right. Sounds like you've thought that out well. And because this is not a, a new program, it has been available for a while in Tulare County.
Yes, it's been in Exeter, but what Sheriff Whitman wanted to do was bring it county-wide, get the publicity. We've been lucky enough to try to partner with Wandering Home and try to get it out to more people to benefit, you know, the county as a whole.
Right. It is a great program, just the, the training is an ongoing thing as well because once you learn to follow the chirp, you, you forget it real quick if you wait six months in between fallouts.
Yes.
That's great. I wholeheartedly support the program. I know it works, I've been involved with it, and it's a great program.
I also think it's a great program.
It's a long time coming and I'm sorry Denise that you had to go through the experience that you did. The only concern I have, and to lighten things up, is that there are some wives that would like to pass these to their husbands.
I don't think that's going to be allowable use.
Limit the distribution.
Yes.
Hey, I'd also like to join in. I think it's a great program. You know, in so many of our communities, we have people with dementia and, and even some of the people that are still maybe living at home under supervision, that this would be a very good article for. So I'm very much behind this program, 100%.
Thank you. And just as an aside, I happen to be speaking to Rotarian this morning and her business is, is convalescent Hospital in Dinuba. And 40% of their facility now is dedicated to Alzheimer's patients. Now, that's a lockdown type of facility, but it just goes to demonstrate how widespread this problem is. When you, someone was asking about the numbers, the numbers are huge. And we have an aging population, so they're going to get larger. And one of the things this will allow people to do is to remain in their homes longer. One of the reasons they get locked up sooner than they perhaps might need to be is because of this problem of wandering and how to keep them protected. And so the ability to be able to track people may allow them to be able to remain in their homes for an extended period of time, but otherwise, we would not be allowed to do. They'd have to go into a locked facility, there's no way of controlling them. So I just see all kinds of benefits on this sort of thing and, and I think again, the idea of using our resources wisely, being able to reduce our costs of search and rescue and be much more effective about it, and will save people's lives and it will save time. So there's no downside to this.
Oh.
And I don't think you'll have any problem with the outcome of the vote this morning. Anything else? If not, anything in motion?
I'll make that motion second.
We have a motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Shida. Please cast your votes and the vote is unanimous. Denise, thank you for your involvement and your foundation and bringing this to our attention. Thank you to the Sheriff's Office for bringing this forward. Oftentimes, good ideas are good ideas, but making them happen takes a lot of effort and work, so thank you very much. That will bring us to our, we still have time to move on to untimed items and so we'll take up number 33. This is a request from our Board to approve funding grants of $5,000 for Step Up Service Learning Grant Program. And I'd like to invite Janice Lehman, who's the Youth Commission Chair, to please come forward. And good morning, Janice. Thank you for being here this morning.
Good morning and thank you for, for having this grant. I just want you to know that at our last Youth Commission meeting, there were two, two women there from schools that are not normally eligible for monies. And both of them said that they wanted me to come back to you and tell you that that was the fact and that how grateful they are to have this opportunity. And I know those, those of us who are aware of working with at-risk youth, many times that's not where the money goes, you know? And it's wonderful that, that you are seeing this as something that this county should be doing. So at our last meeting, we made recommendations. This is the second time that we've been doing the service learning grants. And an exciting thing that happened, so there were, we recommended five and as you know, those are based on scores. Each of the grants are read by, by six of the Youth Commissioners. So we feel that that gives everyone a very fair chance. And then, in addition to that, there was additional money that was from the Gang Administration Budget for another three grants. And two of those would be in Porterville and one, I think, in what is it, District 1. And those were based on scores. And we had several grants that were just a couple of points apart. So our hope is that you would want to give all of these grants. I know Porterville may be kind of lucking out this time, but remember the first time we stepped up, Porterville didn't get anything. So I guess in time, everything just equals out. The universe takes care of everybody. So I also want to add that we will be providing and have provided some technical assistance to some of the organizations, to some of the schools that were either did not receive a grant and wanted to know how they could do better, and also some that just want to improve what they're doing. The other thing that we're going to do is that we're going to be having a meeting very shortly with all of the recipients. And it will accomplish several purposes. One, it will let them know what we expect of them. It will give us a chance to, you know, help them tweak things a little bit if that needs to happen. It will give them a chance to meet with other people that are working on grants and give them a support system. And then to talk about later that we will be having an event in the county that they can all attend. And I know that was very exciting and people enjoyed it last year. And then the last part of this, I think, is the best part, and I've heard that from all of you, would be that we will be presenting these grants in, in video form with, with the recipients coming to the, one of the Board of Supervisors meetings. And, and I know that that is always exciting to see the positive things that are happening in the county. And I'm just, you know, very pleased to be a part of this. I know our, our Youth Commission feels very strongly about what you're doing and we appreciate it. And I would also like to, this is not, I would also like to say that I would like to thank, personally thank Jeff Forbes for all the hard work that he does. He's pretty low-key and understated, he doesn't know I'm going to say this. He's probably turning red behind me, but he really, really has helped and certainly made my job a lot easier and, and more fun. So I thank you for your wonderful ability to select a person to work with us.
Thank you, Janice.
Are there any questions?
Questions? No questions, but I wholeheartedly support funding the eight projects instead of just five. We did have a little extra money left in the training side of the Gang Administration Budget. And I would concur, Jeff does work very hard at this. He, he cares about this. He has to, actually bird, does a lot of bird dogging during the summer while the projects are going on to get them together with each of the supervisors in the district as well as the person that's been chosen to do the, the videography or the, the history of what's happening. One thing that, that I don't think Janet mentioned, something the Youth Commission is working on is a grant writing workshop, which we have several small, you know, nonprofit, mom-and-pop kind of nonprofit agencies in the county that just don't know how to write a grant. And the, with the buildup of our Youth Commission, which is the who's who of working with youth in
easier and, and more fun, so I thank you for your wonderful ability to select a person to work with us.
Thank you, Janice.
Are there any questions?
Questions?
No, no questions, but I, I wholeheartedly support funding the, the eight projects instead of just five. We did have a little extra money left in the training side of the Gang Administration Budget, and I would concur, Jeff does work very hard at this, he, he cares about this, he has to bird, actually bird, does a lot of bird dogging during the summer, while the projects are going on, to get them together with each of the supervisors in the district, as well as the person that's been chosen to do the, the videography or the, the history of, of what's happening. One thing that, that I don't think Janet mentioned, something the Youth Commission is working on is a grant-writing workshop, which we have several small, you know, nonprofit, mom-and-pop kind of nonprofit agencies in the county that just don't know how to write a grant, and the, with the buildup of our Youth Commission, which is the who's who of working with youth in the county, probably in, in central California, a lot of knowledge there and a lot of ability to help these people learn how to write grants and teach them to go out and where to look for grant opportunities, and how to get their organizations better funded. So, our, I'll pat Janet's going to turn a little red now, you know, she's taken the lead of the Youth Commission, has done a wonderful job. They've, you know, we charge them to think out of the box and to see what they could do to help with our, our gang problems, with our youth problems we're having here in Tulare County, and these folks are doing it. They are walking the walk and just doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I just want to also make the comment to congratulate you, and thank you for all the work that you do, Janice, and Jeff too. We have great, great people working to help the youth in our county, and we're very fortunate to have that, and also the rest of the Youth Commissioners, because you guys all work very hard to make this happen, you do a great job, and I'm sure glad to see that this is spread throughout the county. Wish we could fund all of the projects, but it's great to see everyone represented, and as you can see, that this is a high priority for the board, as we have exercised in our federal lobbying requests, efforts to expand this program even further. So, I feel really great about supporting this, and I thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Anything else?
Well, I, I think Mr. Vandepoel just underlined something that is very significant, because the success of the Commissioners and all the volunteers that help us in Step Up, that's the foundation that we went back to Washington DC to seek additional funds to expand our program in Tulare County. And Supervisor Cox, and myself, and other Supervisors have been pointing out the accomplishments of the Step Up program for a couple of years. So, when we went to Washington to talk to the Senator's staff, they already knew about our program, which made it a lot easier for us to have her put in, put in an allocation request for additional funds for Tulare County. But that was all based upon the work mainly of the volunteers.
Yes.
Who really make the program work. So, I'd like to thank everybody involved in the program.
I, I will share that with all the Commissioners at our next meeting, they'll appreciate hearing that, thank you.
Thank you.
And I also would like to echo that. Thank you for all the work you do, and Jeff, for what you do, and I see Kathleen's here today from.
Yes, she is.
Citrus, from Citrus High School, great program that you've done in the past and will continue on. These programs work. They work. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Janice. Is there any other questions, comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve all eight.
I'll second that.
Yeah, so the motion is to increase the.
And increase to eight.
To include the additional, three. All, we had a second by Mr. Vandepoel, first, motion was made by Mr. Cox, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Again, thank you for your dedication to this work, and this is one of the highlights, I think, of, of our efforts of trying to work in a preventative fashion to deal with the, the gang problems that we have in our community, in our counties.
Well, thank you for, for your support of this. It's, it's thrilling to be, be a part of something that, that I think can really make a difference to the youth at Tulare County, and if it helps the youth, it helps us all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I show 9:30, so we'll move back then to our timed items, and the first one would be item number three, a public hearing, a request from a resource management agency to continue the appeal to July 27th, filed by Robert Owen. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Worthley, members of the board. Nick Khan, RMA Planning Division. The applicant has requested this item be continued till July 27th, pending the adoption of the, pending the adoption of the process, the homesite ordinance amendment. The homesite ordinance amendment has been presented to the Planning Commission and is scheduled to be presented back to them on May 12th for recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. This item was appealed filed by Mr. Owen regarding decision of zoning administrator denying zone variance on property located on the east side of Road 52, approximately a half mile south of Scranton Avenue, south of Porterville. Site and surrounding properties are zoned A-E-10, a 10-acre minimum, and contain scattered residential, agricultural, and open space uses. The requested zone variance is to allow creation of a .37-acre homesite parcel from a 4.7-acre parcel. The original parcel contains less than the minimum acreage required in the zone to qualify for the division of land. That's why the applicant applied for the variance. The existing residence is located on the northwest portion of the site. Opposition has been received on this project from adjacent property owners. The remaining larger parcel contains a well that the applicant proposes to provide domestic water to the homesite parcel. The adjacent property owner holds half-deeded interest in that well. If this map were approved, or the variance were approved in the division, land would occur, that property owner may be deprived of certain water rights that he has to that well. This photo was taken in front of the site facing south on Road 252. This photo shows the existing house in which the property owner wishes to create a homesite parcel around. This slide is an aerial of the site. As you can see, majority of the surrounding property is primarily agricultural. The zoning administrator denied the variance based on the following findings. The site does not contain any unusual physical conditions that would justify the division of land. There are numerous four- and five-acre parcels surrounding the site. However, since the application of zoning in '77 or '78, none of those properties have been further divided. Furthermore, the Porterville area community plan designates site as agricultural. Site is zoned A-E-10. Further dividing this property would result in parcels that are not viable for agricultural use. Again, the property owner has requested that the public hearing be continued until July 27th. Staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Just to comment myself, I, I was not inclined to grant this continuance, but I think in light of the information you provided this morning about a pending plan of how we're going to address this on a countywide systematic basis, it might make sense to do so. Other questions or comments from our board members? If not, then, yes, sir.
Chairman Bing Kimball, RMA Planning. Nick is our expert on homesite parcels, and we, we do want to add to the record for consideration that the ordinance for homesite parcels that's currently being considered does not necessarily change something that would help this gentleman achieve that. I just want to make sure that was clear.
I think I understood that, but I just, but I do think it would be appropriate for him to be judged as all similarly situated property owners would be judged, and I think that's still an appropriate way to move forward.
Understood.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to continue then to July 27th. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Yeah, we'll, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the, the board on this matter, please, invite to come forward at this time and give us your name and address. Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public hearing, bring it back for action.
I have a, a different view. I'm not in favor of granting this extension when we know that our public policy would prohibit such subdivisions in the future. If there's new information that's provided by the, the applicant, I'm willing to hear that new information, but I think overall, on the policy basis, this is one of the things that I look forward to in the ordinances that we will not allow in the future.
I, I don't disagree with your, I think, your conclusion, Mr. Ashida, I just think that we have not yet actually established that, that policy, and I think that's what we're talking about doing, is establishing that policy on a formalized basis, and then rendering a decision. I don't think it's going to change the outcome for the applicant, but I think it's an appropriate way to handle it. Entertained a motion?
Motion to continue to July 27th.
I'll second that.
Further conversation? If not, please cast your votes. Votes are four to, for, for the yes, and the Ashida, no.
Mr. Chair, may I say I'm very glad to see, for once, that there's a red box by a single person, and it's not me.
(laughing). We've had that happen a few times. All right, then that'll take us then to item number four, which is a public hearing, request from the probation department to adopt a fee increase for the cost of support in the juvenile detention facility and youth facility. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Cheryl Pasalakis, and I am the probation account supervisor for the probation department. We are here this morning to ask that you approve our recommendation to increase our fees for our juvenile detention facility and youth facility. The Welfare and Institution Code states that the county may recoup costs to house minors in our facilities from the parents and legal guardians of minors. These costs can only include the cost of food and food preparation, clothing, personal supplies, and medical expenses. We are allowed to adjust these charges every three years based on the Consumer Price Index. The probation department has not asked for a fee increase since 1996. We are asking to increase our juvenile detention facility fees from $15 per day to $19.50 per day, and the youth facility fees from $10.75 per day to $20.60 per day. These fees will be charged based on an individual's ability to pay. All they need to do is come into our probation department for a financial evaluation. The maximum that a county can charge for Welfare and Institution Code is $30 per day. The rate is to be adjusted in 2012. Tulare County's adjusted rates are still below the maximum amount that can be charged. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to address the board on this matter is requested to come forward and give us your name and address at this time. Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I want to thank the probation staff for providing me with the, the math on, on these calculations that I requested late last week, and I do concur that there's a need to make this change, would make the motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second, a motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Ashida. Votes are cast unanimously in support of the request, and that will bring us to our final timed item, item five, public hearing request from the county library to consider and approve a library fee of $5 for the public to purchase a USB memory stick to be implemented beginning July 1st, 2010. Good morning, Mr. Lewis.
Good morning, Board, CAO Council. Brian Lewis, Tulare County Librarian. I'm here today to request that the county library be able to sell to our customers USB memory sticks that they can put on our computers so that they can download their information. A number of years ago, your board approved us to sell floppies so they could do the same thing, but most of the new computers don't even come with a floppy anymore, so.
Mr. Chair, what, what was that? What? (laughing). That was, that's part of your record, Paul.
Part of your, yeah. So, I'm here to ask that we charge $5, which is under, under the actual fee that we're paying by 22 cents.
All right, are there any questions? Yes.
I was just curious, just, just from my knowledge, what, what are the size of these memory sticks that you're going to be selling?
I believe they're a 1, 182 megabytes.
Okay.
Yeah.
128.
You can't.
Someone in the background said 128.
128, okay.
Okay. Well, I, I was going to say, you know, that's a, if, if you were going to get any higher, I was going to say that's a pretty damn good deal, and I would, I would wear one or carry one on my keyring that just had a Tulare County Library stamp on it for that price.
Well, great.
And that's, that's still a pretty good deal.
And that, that's why we're limiting how many people can buy, because you really can't even go to a store and buy one that has that small of memory, and they're about $15, so it's a real good deal to people who need the information dropped right away, and by the same token, it, it doesn't invite people to just do nothing but download and, and use up all of our, our abilities to help people.
It, how does it go through the laundry?
I don't know. I can test that out for you, Supervisor.
My, my, my freshman, freshman state's trying to find that out right now with the one he went through, laundry. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Not? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this matter before the board, please come forward at this time, give us your name and address. Seeing and hearing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
I, I think it's great that we're doing this and providing this resource to the constituents that use the library, and so with that, I would definitely move approval of this item.
I would second that.
Motion by Mr. Vandepoel, seconded by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you very much.
Moving forward. And that brings us to our last regularly scheduled item for today, item number 34, request from the County Administrative Office to approve an amendment to administrative regulation number one. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning. I'm Carol Pytling. I am a senior administrative analyst with the County Administrative Office. The item for your consideration this morning is Administrative Regulation Number One, or as we call them, AR1, and it's regarding the reimbursement of employee and county officials for travel-related expenses. An administrative regulation is actually a policy statement that comes from the County Administrative Office. There are currently 36 of those in place in Tulare County. In our ongoing process of reviewing those policy statements, your board in the past year has actually added two new ARs in response to federal regulations requiring written policies in the areas of donation acceptance and in identity theft prevention measures. Your board has also reviewed eight other of those ARs and determined that they are currently not in need of any kind of adjustment or revision, and have amended another eight. So, this is part of our ongoing process, and now we're looking at AR1 and requesting your approval on the amendment. The current AR was approved by the Board of Supervisors on February 7th, 1995. That is the AR that is currently in place. The proposed regulation differs from the current regulation in a number of, of ways. Our current practice for setting per diem rates for meals and incidentals is currently tied to the Los Angeles Anaheim Riverside Consumer Price Index. Future adjustments to that per diem rate would be tied to the U.S. General Administration Services per diem rates specifically for Kings in Tulare County, State of California. Another of our ARs, number 28, specifically addresses, among other things, the authority for automobile allowances for certain employees and elected officials. And we have lifted out that language from AR28 and incorporated it now in AR1 as a way of bringing all of our travel reimbursement issues into a single document. Current practice for adjustments of those automobile allowances is again currently set with the Los Angeles Anaheim Riverside Consumer Price Index, and the proposed policy would tie those adjustments to IRS mileage reimbursement rates as a new index. Reimbursements for business-related mileage will begin with an individual's tax home as defined by IRS. Travel expense claims will now need to be submitted to the auditor's office for reimbursement within 60 days after the end of the month when the travel has occurred, as opposed to the 30 days that we were currently using, giving people more opportunity to get their records together and, and submit their claims for reimbursement. And we have added the ability for a department or department head to approve coffee or cookies or some other light refreshment for large group meetings, conferences, seminars, training sessions, again, with department head approval. sessions, again with department head approval. Are there any questions?
Any questions, members, Mr. Cox?
A couple of easy ones, I think, for me, the very beginning, you know, for the front page says this regulation applies to all county employees and elected officials, and then you put including members of the Board of Supervisors, I don't think we need to, you know, single us out just because we have a watchdog wanting to make sure our name is on this, I would think if you had said county employees and all elected officials would be sufficient, it appears again on page six, again, you know, we're singled out, we're looking at an AR that is for employees, department heads, and all elected officials, I don't think there's any need to single the Board of Supervisors out, and really the only issue I have would be a personal one on page seven, number five, talks about individuals receiving a monthly automobile allowance will not be entitled to a county vehicle, when our watchdog newspaper went through the receipts, there was one gas charge from myself, I had taken a county rental car to Sacramento and back, the cost of the gas was approximately forty-eight dollars, the cost of the rental car was about sixty dollars, so a little over a hundred dollars, had I driven my own vehicle and charged mileage, it would have been closer to two hundred dollars, I feel like this ties my hand, not being able to be prudent and look at the expense of traveling and charging mileage versus picking up one of the county vehicles, that's the only issue I have, it's, it might be a seventy to a hundred dollars here and there, but again, it's, for me, it's the people's money, and I think, you know, if you tie my hand and say, well, I can't pick up that car for the day trip to Sacramento, you know, I know this is nitpicking, but you've, you know, it's gonna cost the citizens more, I'm not allowed to use a county rental car, now I gotta jump in my own car and charge mileage.
I'll just, Carol can respond if you would like to, but I think one of the issues there is that because we have a combination policy which involves a car allowance, which is a minimal amount of money to help pay for portions of the cost of purchasing your car, and we have the mileage, and I know this is not what you're referring to, Mr. Cox, but there would be the potential for someone to receive a car allowance and then drive a county car all the time, and therefore not incur that expense that was intended to be part of the overall plan, so while I think you make excellent sense, I think there's probably a little larger picture issue here in terms of, because we have this hybrid system that we have, it's necessary to keep this in play, and it's really to avoid someone who would perhaps take advantage of it, no one on this board is going to do that, no one ever would do that, but potentially that could happen, where they would receive the car allowance and then drive another car that belongs to the county and get mileage, you know.
Oh, I realize that, it's just that this ties my hands to where now, you know, I just, I can't, cannot pick up a car for the day, do, you know, seven hours driving in one day and save the county a hundred bucks, it's petty.
Mr. Ennis?
I'd just like to say that I'm glad that we're bringing this forward, you know, I said early on, when this all came up, that I just wanted to know what I can and cannot do as a county supervisor, and I think this brings it all out in the open, and that's what I'm proud of here today, that we're coming up with something that we can look at, we've got guidelines, and we have something we can stay with, and I really appreciate that.
Mr. Vandepoel?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for, the CAO's office for bringing this forward, I think it's very important that we look at these regulations that have been in place since nineteen ninety-five, you know, as supervisors, I think we do know what we can do, it's nice to see what it's, that it's written here, I mean, I know that we all here abide by the law, no matter what anyone says, you know, the law is abided by, we do not break the law, and we have our own, our own personal policies that we live by as well, and that's just a code of ethics, and also know that the people that we serve are gonna hold us accountable, so I'm glad to see that we're moving this forward, thank you.
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Ashida?
There are a couple of things in here that concern me, and I'd like us to bring this back at a later date to review the results, one is the consumer rate index using Kings in Tulare County, in our policy, basically, you're not entitled to per diem in a seventy-five mile radius of Visalia, basically, and that would exclude both our counties and most our travel is in a metropolitan area, that our, you know, our costs are different, so I think that part of the policy really needs to be studied a little bit more.
So if I may just interject, are you saying that you would like us to come back and review this in the future to indicate how it's working out as opposed to changing the policy today, is that what you're asking?
No, all I'm saying is I'd like to review the effects of the policy, there are some issues in here that I think need further review, I'm willing to pass the policy today, but there's some things in here that concern me that I would like to see potentially amended in the very near future, is it doesn't make sense to have a per diem rate in an area that you excluded to even get per diem.
Interesting point, yes.
Another one is training, because of our schedules, of our employees too, that they may be making one-day trips to Sacramento, to Los Angeles, to San Francisco, wherever they may be making those one-day trips, and they can't, because scheduling can't spend a night in a hotel, but yet they get home at ten to midnight, and I think that the county can afford a meal for those people who are on the road and have fourteen to eighteen hour days attending those type of training programs, but I know there's maybe a legal aspect that's something we, that I'd like to explore in the future.
There is, and council can correct me if I'm misstating, but any meal under those circumstances where there was not an overnight stay would become taxable income to the recipient.
It's like going to the doctor, I'd like to see another opinion too.
Mr. Chairman, if I might address this, we've, we've had numerous opinions, both accounting opinions and legal opinions from my office and outside my office, as, and I fully agree with Mr. Ashida that it's idiotic, but it is the rule, it is, the Internal Revenue Code would require us to reimburse the employee for the meal, less the withholding we would have to do, and the accounting aspects of that, I'm not even sure if that would be mechanically possible, but it is, it is what it is.
Well, I'd like to make it extremely clear to our employees that this is where it's coming from, it's mandated by the IRS code, and we're not trying to be cheap on them, it's just that that's what the regulations read.
And I, and I think just to add to that, and that is a change in the IRS code, it's not always been that way, because before, it used to be, as you say, when you were on county business, outside and for supervisors outside of your district, but for all employees, if you're, if you're called by county business to be out and about, which would require you during a meal, that the county would pick up the cost of your meal, and it would not be a taxable item to you, and that is one of the major changes in this, in this ordinance.
And the, of course, the labor intensity, as you can imagine, of trying to-
Trying to have a bifurcated system where you would say, okay, we'll let you do that and just pay the tax on it, becomes prohibitively expensive to try to operate it, but it is, it is unfortunate, and I think Mr. Ashida is exactly correct, and I had the same kind of response when it was told to me, because it just seems, did not make sense, it's not fair for employees, because it's not like they can run home to their homes and eat a meal when they're in Sacramento, or Los Angeles, or San Francisco, or attending a conference, and it's most unfortunate, it makes, it makes no sense, and it will actually encourage people to probably do things that, you know, such as spending nights that they might have done for day trips for purposes of just being able to, you know, get their food paid for, but it's, it is what it is, and that's what we're dealing with here today, and that's why it's important to bring these things forward, to keep them current, so that as Mr. Ennis said, we know what we're allowed to do and should be doing, and we can abide by those rules once they're set out for us, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify a little further, this would involve training where a meal was not provided as part of the training, if a meal is provided as part of the training costs, we're not going to deem the cost of that meal to be taxable income, in additions, there are occasionally other types of events other than training, which an employee or an elected official may have to attend as part of their official duties, and very often are centered around meals, and those are reimbursable or covered expenses, it's the, exactly as you described, the employee who goes into Fresno, the meal is not provided as part of the training, they have to buy lunch, because the training goes in the morning and the afternoon, and that would be a taxable income to them.
Thank you for that clarification, yes.
Yes, I'd like to make a few comments, first of all, I want to thank Carol and the group that worked on this, they worked long and hard, this has been a long process, not just for this AR, but updating all of our policies, it's taken more than I would like, but it is what it is, the group that worked on this, Arlene Silva and Abel Martinez from the county council's office, Carol from my office, Vern McDonald, Becky Carr and Rita Woodard from the auditor controller's office, all had a say in this, we've been assured by council that this is in accordance with the IRS, we have tightened up a number of areas in our policy, and this does give us a roadmap to live by going forward, and I look forward to finishing up the AR update process and bringing other policies to this board for your consideration.
Thank you, any other questions or comments, not, entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to, in my motion, include striking the words where it says including members of the Board of Supervisors, and I would make the motion to approve AR one, striking the two places where I could find including members of the Board of Supervisors.
Second, Ed.
There's a motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Ennis, please cast your votes, and by the way, I was going to comment, I think your comments are well taken, because we are an elected official, we are included within that subset, there's no need to point and sound directly. Very well, that concludes our regularly scheduled items, we have purpose reasons for a closed session, council this morning.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do, items A, B, and F are not needed and are therefore off your board's closed session agenda, you have items C through H, I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you for being attentive this morning.